From District Two, Victor Edwards. From District Three, Clinton Johnson. From District Four, Russell Gray. From District Five, Gloria Gaines. And from District Six, Anthony Jones. We are also joined by County Administrator Michael McCoy, Assistant County Administrator Scott Addison, County Clerk Juwan Ware, and County Attorney Spencer Lee. This is your Dougherty County Board of Commissioners Commission Meeting. Thank you for joining.
All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
All right, let's go ahead. Call to the Dougherty County Special Call Meeting for September 28th, 2020. I'm going to begin with the roll call. Commissioner Hudson. Commissioner Edwards, present. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Commissioner Gaines?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Present.
And where's Madam Clerk? Oh, there, there, sorry. Madam Clerk, I have by my count, Commissioner Hudson's absent. A little resound for Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Johnson not here. Commissioner Johnson is not here, so we have Commissioner Edwards, Gray, Gaines, Jones, Chairman presiding. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Gray. All right. Consider for action the August 31st regular meeting and September 14th work session minutes. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Motion. Motion in second. Any discussion? There being no one called matter for a vote, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, opposed, same sign. Motion cured unanimously. We'll now move on to delegations. This is where the part where the commission will hear comments of those items pertaining to Dougherty County, which public hearing has not been held or scheduled. We ask you to be briefed to the point and consider it of time for others. The very first delegation that we have is Citizen Ned Newcombe, who is present to discuss flooding concerns in Dougherty County. Good morning, Mr. Newcombe.
Good morning.
How are you this morning?
I'm good. Do I become ask all?
You can take it off at the podium.
Thank you. Thank you all for allowing me to voice my concerns this morning through the Commissioner's present and ones on line. My name is Ned Newcombe. I live on Lover's Lane Road in North Dougherty County. My house flooded on March 7th of this year. I'm here this morning to request that Dougherty County Commission perform four tasks to better inform the citizens of Dougherty County that will possibly help them prepare for a flood or maybe prevent a house from flooding. Number one, I would like to request that FERC, I'd like for the county to request FERC to allow Georgia Power to release up to three feet of water on Lake Sheehaw in advance of a high water event. Number two, I would like to have Dougherty County Emergency Management plan and coordinate with Georgia Power and Crisp County Power to more effectively release water from their dams to reduce the chances of homes in Dougherty County flooding. Number three, find flooding to install a flood gauge in Dougherty County on the lake to allow those of us affected by the rising lake waters to know what's going on in advance. Number four, I would like a website that would glue all this together so that citizens can quickly go to one site and find information so that they don't have to go to multiple sites and make phone calls or, in some cases, drive specific straight to the dam to find out what's going on, because that's what I do now. The background is my home was built in 1949. It flooded in 1966, '94, '98, and this year in March 2020. My home was one of seven or eight homes on Lover's Lane that flooded, an estimated 18 homes in Dougherty County. This flood barely made the news. It was covered up by COVID-19 at the time, and it really, unless you were directly affected, you didn't really know it happened. I only had two inches of water in my house, but whether it's two inches or two feet, the cleanup and everything is the same.
It's miserable.
It is my opinion that these homes flooded solely because of Crisp County dumping water unnecessarily on Dougherty County. This isn't the first time they've done it, and it won't be the last time they've done it. In fact, they did it again this month on...
Can you explain that? And I'm part of my ignorance. Explain.
So, you got Lake Blackshear.
Sure.
Lake Blackshear is operated by Crisp County Power Commission.
Right. So they let off a bunch of water.
They, Lake Blackshear is a large body of water compared to our lake here. It might, you might say it's a three bu, three bu gallon bucket of water, and we're a one gallon bucket of water. And so, in order to protect their homes from flooding, really to protect their docks from flooding, they tend to drop their water, and they'll release it all at once, as opposed to releasing it over a period of days, which they could. They ju, they just open the gates and Dougherty County better be prepared because it's coming. What happened in March was you already had the Muckley and the Kinchafuni cresting when they dumped. And that coordinated effort, as someone said the other night, when all three crest at the same time, you better watch out because things are going to happen. And it was need...
So there's no methodology for, like, like Crisp doesn't have to pick up the phone and call Georgia Power?
Nope. They don't have to tell anybody. Now, typically what Georgia Power tells me is they, they, they say they communicate, but that communication is merely one way. This is what we're doing, and we're dumping water. And what I'm asking for is we've got Dougherty County Emergency Management. Somebody there needs to coordinate. Now, Russell Gray, Commissioner Gray offered to do this the other night, but I, but I really think it should be an emergency management position that they communicate with Crisp County, with Georgia Power. Because without that communication, and I'm going to tell you, because I've talked to the people in Crisp County, they don't care about us. They're going to dump the water if they think they need to. On the day when, as my house was flooding, Lake Blackshear was four feet low, and I think Commissioner Gray saw that firsthand. So, so, I mean, there's no rhyme or reason for that. That, that was easily avoidable. They, 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 their story is they were anticipating a lot of water coming down, but it never happened. They're, they, they had four feet low for two to three days. They could easily have reduced, dropped a lot less water. Now, the problem with, with that, the next step is, is I would like a flood gauge somewhere on Lake Worth, Lake Sheehaw area, because we, I, I currently in March...
Don't we have one?
Georgia Power has one, but we don't have access to their data. Now, there are other flood gauges. There are flood gauges going downstream, like there's one on the Flint downstream from the, from the dams. But in, in March...
The Army Corps of Engineers has one too, and, and it, like, you can go to a website and...
Well, there's the problem, because there's no interoperability between what Georgia Corps of Engineers has, what Lee County has, their own flood gauge, and other entities that, you know, the, the Georgia Department of Natural Resources maybe, they have, they have...
Why don't they just have one that everybody looks at?
Well...
That would make too much sense.
That would make sense, but when, when you start doing the math between the water level in this creek and that creek, plus the water level, plus the anticipated rise because of what's coming down, you can't put that into an algorithm to predict the severity and...
The Corps, the Corps of Engineers does, though.
Well, they, they, they could. It's a complicated algorithm, and there's a lot of variables. Nobody's taken that task...
I think, I think they do, like, I literally do think that the Corps of Engineers has, like, a website. I, I could be making this up, but can we, this is all very reasonable. We all, very reasonable questions, and we need to get, you know, some answers. Mr. McCoy, can we, can we just get Chief Scott, who's our Emergency Management Director?
We've, we've already got involved at a town hall last Monday, and Chief Scott and...
And I'm trying, I'm, I want him to come to a commission meeting to talk, to talk, and just educate, do a public presentation, and so we can address... You ask very reasonable questions, and I don't, I don't know the answers to all of them, but I sure would like to know the answers to them. And I had, you had flood gauge, a website, what was, you had four asks. What were they again?
The main thing is, I would like, Georgia Power tells me they are not allowed to drop water in advance of a flood. Now, there seems to be a little miscommunication there, but what I am told is if Dougherty County would ask FERC to give Georgia Power permission, then they could do it. Georgia Power denies that they have that ability now. So, for example, we...
Okay, so...
So, for example, we, we've got a six inch rain happening, and Georgia Power cannot do anything until the gauge that they look at says, well, we need to dump water. They came dumping in advance.
But Crisp County can.
Crisp County can.
Why can they do it and Georgia Power can't?
It's a licensing agreement through FERC. They're both controlled by FERC.
And it's the governance of the ownership. Crisp Power is, I believe, owned by...
The people.
An authority versus Georgia Power, which is a public entity.
That's right.
That makes about as much sense as...
It, it, it's bureaucracy, but I think this is easily reconciled with some transparency and collaboration between the different organizations involved. And I think there's some interest with Albany State and other, you know, local entities to work together to try to come up with a collaborative solution.
Makes too much sense. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. McCoy, can you get, one, I'd like to see Chief Scott come and talk to us at the commission meeting. I'd like to, please have him educated on the FERC issue that Mr. Newcombe's talked about, and if there's a letter that we need to sign or that I need to sign to send to FERC or we need, you know, I would make, that's, that would be the easiest letter in the world to sign, okay? Dear FERC, please let Georgia Power let off water, you know, in advance of a flood. That makes good sense. So, I mean, I'd sign that tomorrow. Then, have, if we can have him talk about the flood gauge and website and all that information, I think that would be good. I think Mr. Newcombe's made a very good presentation, and I appreciate you taking the time to come here, and I think we will try to get you some answers. Does that make sense, Mr. Newcombe?
Perfect. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newcombe.
Thank you very much for your time and effort here.
Thank you all.
Absolutely. All right. All right, next, we have Sherrell Byrd from Salida Rising, who is present to provide an update on their COVID-19 relief efforts. Good morning, Ms. Byrd. Good morning, Ms. Byrd.
Good morning. Good morning. So yes, I wanted to just come and share with you all the work that Soliga Rising was able to do in response to the COVID-19 pandemic here in Dougherty County in southwest Georgia. So when the pandemic hit in March, we reached out to a few of our community leaders and asked like, what can we do? How can we help? And we were told very clearly, do what you can. We need help. You don't need permission. Just do something. If there's something you can do, just go out and do it. And so we took that to heart and we sat down as an organization, which we're very small in terms of our board. We have a volunteer board of about seven board members, which includes myself, Michael Harper, I'm the Faruki, Kiana Jackson, James Pratt, who's here with me today. Dominique Riggins, there he is, and Adriana Williams. So we thought about what could we do really realistically with the small numbers that we had as an organization? So we started out with, as you saw in the video, releasing what we call the Albany-Doherty COVID-19 Mutual Aid Toolkit. And what that is, is a way for us to centralize the resources and the information that were coming really quickly in our community. And we know that a lot of times communication is very difficult, especially where there's being so many mediums in which people receive information. So finding a way that we can centralize all of the information from federal, state, regional, local, in one place where people can find that information and keeping it very it was very fluid and very dynamic. So we actually had to hire an intern to be able to keep pace with all of the changing information that was coming out to our community. So we were able to do that. And then once the governor then announced that they would reopen the state, particularly with essential businesses, we knew we wanted to find a way to mitigate what was about to happen with our local small businesses. And so we reached out to a few and asked, what do you need right now? Like, what will help you to be able to open your doors? Well, many of them, as you know, unfortunately, did not receive the PPU grants and loans that were available, did not receive the unemployment rates, unemployment grants as well. So they were and had having been closed for about two months at this point, many of them were very cash strapped to be able to afford the necessary PPE to open their doors. So we knew that was an opportunity for us to be able to jump in and help. So we created the Save Ourselves Town Halls so that we can have listening sessions with these businesses, with local officials, to be able to truly understand what their needs are. We actually sat down with them as well as the City of Albany Community Economic Development, who at that time was also releasing their coronavirus cares grant, and we're looking to define how they can create funding guidelines for these businesses. So out of that, they decided, you know, we let them handle the funding part, they had that, and we decided to raise money to be able to secure PPE for these businesses. We raised about $10,000 and were able to give to about 100 businesses, a little over 100, actually, our goal was 100. We I think we did about 125 businesses. We supplied them with no touch thermometers, disinfectant spray, gloves, hand sanitizer, 2020 census materials, City of Albany mask up flyers, and then Albany Strong branded mask, which I brought for all of you today. So I'll give those out after this is this presentation. So we were happy to have stopped there. We felt like we had done quite a bit for the community at that point. But then we were contacted by an organization called Fresh Communities out of Waycross, Georgia, Ware County, who formed a partnership with the USDA and their food to farm to families food box program to really help not only our farmers, who at that time were not able to give out their food like they were, to be able to source food to restaurants and school systems and other types of businesses that they had. And so what we were seeing were farmers actually turning under crops at that time because they really had no place to be able to give out the give out their to source their products. And so there was a national outcry. People were very outraged because they felt that food could go to people who needed it the most during the pandemic. And so that's where the USDA stepped in. They created this program and we were able to assist Fresh Communities and as Fresh Communities identified distribution sites in southeast Georgia, we identified sites in southwest Georgia. So as you can see, we served about or as you saw in the video, we served about 122 sites. Cutliffe Grove, the Albany Housing Authority, and Emmanuel Seven Day of Venice Church were three of the local site local sites here in Dougherty County. Seventy-five counties were served. That was again 345,000, over 345,000 gallons of milk, about over 1.5 million pounds of food were given to about, I think in the video, I think it said about it and have it down here, but several, about 34,000 families were served through this initiative. And so we were very super proud to be able to help our community in those ways get through COVID-19. So we knew you all were handling the acute phase. We were really taking a look at that medium to long term phase and we still are in that point. And so right now we are looking at through our Food Justice Initiative and our Food Fight Coalition, which we were supposed to present today. Hopefully, we'll come back and make a full presentation about the work we're doing there. But the reason why that coalition is so critical right now is because we know COVID-19 hit our community because of the underlying health rates and health issues that are centered around poor health as well as poor nutrition in our community. And so some of the things we're working on in the Food Justice Coalition are a moratorium on liquor stores as well as predatory markets like Dollar General stores in vulnerable areas here in Albany, Georgia. Additionally, we partnered with the City of Albany and Albany State University, who they created what's called an Albany data hub, Albany Food Data Hub. And that food data hub allows us to be able to map where are all the predatory lending markets, the fast food restaurants, what is the proximity of certain homes and neighborhoods to grocery stores? And it's fully online. You can go and check that out now on the Albany, City of Albany's website. But that allows us to be able to truly identify what are some of the key areas that were really truly hit by COVID-19? And then what are we also overlay that with? What are some of the health rates already in those areas in relation to proximity to grocery stores and fast food restaurants and things of that nature? So we are actually developing a community food behavior survey, which will be an extension of this food data hub so that we can listen and hear from our community about what their food behaviors are and how can we help to address and turn those food behavior issues around so that we can deal with things when things like pandemics like COVID-19 hit our community, we're well aware on how to address those things. So we are actually also creating an African-American diet and food behaviors research study. We have actual several researchers as a part of our coalition who are creating what they consider similar to a Mediterranean diet for African-Americans that will really help to shape food behaviors and nutrition and health outcomes. We're also looking at things like community garden plans as well as farmers markets and grocery stores for our community. So while in addition to working on that, I also want to just personally thank each and every one of you for the vote that you made for the electoral, the drop boxes. That's a part of our Electoral Protection Coalition. And so we thank you for making the best decision that we feel for Albany, Georgia right now while we're still in very much in the midst of a COVID-19 pandemic. That allows people to be able to vote safely and securely and have several options in which they can choose from so that they can vote and there's no barriers to voting. We additionally are doing work around the 2020 census. We continue to do that. We also are partnering, we're partners at with A Club in their fight for lower utility bills. We know that utility bills are also a major issue right now, always has been, but now even more compounded because of the COVID-19 pandemic. People that have been out of work, that are needing to catch up on their bills. And so we're asking for things like moratorium on late fees as well as cutoffs so that people can navigate this time right now that we're all facing in our country and in our city. So also just to real quick, we are on our Rural Health, which is another one of our initiatives. We are taking a deep dive into COVID-19. We've been working with a couple of organizations who have done research and documentaries that you we have one actually on the City of Albany website that was created by the Pivot Foundation. They created a video just specifically on food insecurity that features a Better Way Grocers and the work that they are doing around food insecurity. And we've also been working with an organization out of, I want to say, New York called ProPublica, who's also doing a deep dive into why COVID-19 hit our community and what are some of the underlying issues around that? So you'll see that actually that documentary will be coming out next month in October, which will really highlight Albany in a really major way. So we're really really looking forward to that. So again, thank you all for the work that you have done and thank you for allowing us to be a part of helping to bring our community back to a place of, I guess, balance after COVID-19. So we appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Ms. Byrd. And thank you for your contributions and please share our gratitude towards the other members of Soliga Rising. Thank you. All right, next we'll hear from William Wright from Afram Tech Inc., who's present to discuss concerns regarding the involvement of minority business enterprises in community development projects. He's not here? Okay. All right. Any other delegations that did not previously sign up that wish to be heard at this time? Okay. Let's move on with the agenda. Purchases considered for action resolution providing for the acceptance and execution of the contract to accept the bid to complete the replacement of the Candlestick Flare Station for solid waste with the lowest responsive responsible in responsive bidder meeting specifications to Aptim Environmental and Infrastructure LLC out of Findlay, Ohio in the amount of 150,000, $157,010, subject to execution by the county administrator for contractors. Submitted bids with the highest being $292,166.98 funding is budgeted solid waste capital outlay. Assistant County Administrator, Mr. Addison, will address. Good morning, Mr. Addison.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone. This replacement is replacing our our current flare station, which has been in operation since 2003, and it's no longer functional, nor is it compatible with our landfill gas to energy system. So we need to replace the system with something that can operate when the landfill gas energy plant is down and operate seamlessly there so that we can maintain compliance with environmental regulations. And this system will do that. We recommend approval.
Very good. Any comments or questions? All right, let's go ahead. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? There being known, we'll call about it for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Additional business considered for action, the resolution authorizing the intergovernmental agreement with the City of Albany for the 2020 Burn Justice Assistance JAG program in the amount of $13,516.40. The agreement stipulates that the county will receive 20% of the total award in the amount of $67,582. Mr. Addison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We recommend approval of this agreement, which will give us approximately $13,500 in funds. It's an annual agreement and we recommend moving forward.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Motion is second. Any discussion? There being known, we'll call about it for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the resolution declaring one 2002 GMC pickup truck and one 2003 GMC pickup truck a surplus and authorize a transfer at no cost of the same to the Chehalh Park Authority. This request is made on behalf of Executive Director Tommy Gregor. Mr. Addison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We were contacted by Mr. Gregor when he saw our surplus list coming and needs a few vehicles for use inside the park. And he went out and looked at Public Works at our our fleet there that was gonna be available. And we feel that this would be a good use for these two trucks and we recommend approval.
Very good. Now, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? There being known, we'll call about it for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the application for a one-day alcoholic beverages license for Jessica Rutledge for a Flint River Keeper Inc. fundraiser at Pretoria Fields Collective Farm at 5626 Walker Duckers Station Road on October 24, 2020. The Albany-Doherty Marshal's Office recommends approval. Chief Anthony Donaldson Business and License and Support Department will address.
So this is one day I call application.
At at Pretoria Fields where they make beer.
Yes, and they just have an event at.
I think we can I think I think we can handle this one. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? There being known, we'll call about it for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for coming down here, though. I appreciate that. Granting a beer license to a beer maker is really not that hard. Mr. McCoy?
Nothing further. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Lee?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Commissioner Edwards?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gaines?
Nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Gray?
Two quick things. One, I want to thank all the citizens that got together last Monday night for a town hall on the the localized flooding in northern Dougherty County. I think a lot of collective intelligence was was amassed and a good plan and path forward there. And the other thing, I want to again encourage everybody who has not done so yet, stop what you're doing, go on the internet, go to the census website and fill out your information. I want to read a paragraph here that came from an email from Paul Forghey to the commissioners and and Mr. McCoy as an update that'll really drive home the importance of this. So it reads, "A complete count is essential for Albany and Dougherty County. Without it, we will get less than our fair share in federal funding for things such as storm recovery, Medicare, Medicaid, hospitals, education, roads and bridges, libraries, social programs, and much more. In addition, we could also lose political representation if our numbers do not accurately reflect the community." So this is very important. We've seen how important storm recovery dollars are. It's not based on a number that we throw up to FEMA and GMA. It's based on census data, as is a lot of other grant and aid and and federal funding that is earmarked for Dougherty County, Albany, and the citizens of our community. So please encourage you all to fill out your census information as soon as possible.
Very good. Very good. Commissioner Jones?
My good best friend with nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Say that one more time, Commissioner Jones.
What'd you say, Mr. Chairman?
Say it again.
Can you can you I I did not hear what you said. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said, that's my good best friend, but this is a question with nothing, nothing, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I I I got you. Very good. All right. Mr. Lee, did you have anything? Okay. Madam Clerk, do you have the letter from Mayor Dura on you? Can I see it? Oh, it's in my pocket?
I'll get it to you.
Or just show me where it's at. Thank you, ma'am. So on May 11th, I received a rather bizarre letter from the mayor addressing a variety of issues, some of which appear to be based in fact, some of which don't appear to be based in any fact at all. It appears in sort of rambling fashion to address funds for the construction of a tennis center as well as a variety of issues related to that, as well as apparently demanding that Dougherty County change how it structures its tax commissioner. And I'm trying to be as diplomatic as I can be. Then goes on. Uh, it then goes on, uh, to cite some bizarre and inaccurate information relative to the tax department in the paper. Here's my response. Uh, we were, I was requested to provide a response to, to the mayor. I'll be happy to draft a response to the mayor. Um, I don't know, it's sort of hard to factually respond to a letter that doesn't really, uh, doesn't really address facts. Um, so, um, I will say this parenthetically, I've been on the commission for five, going on six years, um, and SPOST, SPOST 6 is the one that has the tennis center money, is that correct, Mr. McCoy?
Um, I think it was, uh, earlier, SPOST.
It's not SPOST 3, is it? Cause it's, SPOST 3 has been spent down.
There are two different SPOSTs.
Okay. Is it SPOST 5 and SPOST 6?
One of them may be paid out.
Well, there's, there's approximately about 1.7 million dollars-
That's, that's correct.
-in, in, in funds. And so I, I'm just, I'm not going to go through this entire letter, but, um, anyways, here's how the letter begins. "Dear Chairman and Commissioners, Funds for construction of a tennis center were collected in SPOST 3," which the funds were collected by the county, not the city. "There has, over the last 25 years, been much discussion as to where that facility would be constructed, the size and amenities, and how it would be staffed. I attended a meeting sponsored by the Albany Tennis Association on Tuesday, February 25th. That organization, as you may be aware, has requested that 18 to 20 additional courts be constructed on the campus of ASU West. The county was represented by the county administrator and your attorney. I suggested that the tennis, I suggested that the tennis center be constructed south of the Civic Center with the understanding that operation and staffing would be coordinated with a revived first tee program. Um, I'm unaware of there being any funding to actually revive first tee. Um, and this would be an excellent site should the county truly wish to provide underprivileged youth with access to tennis. I would anticipate that instruction would be offered in conjunction with golf lessons on alternating days. It was my recommendation that three to five courts be constructed with a small office shop. This would be consistent with the tennis center, which was initially proposed to host tournaments in illustration of a facility similar to the, what I have envisioned is enclosed for your review. Additionally, we would bring further activity downtown several times a year." Anyways, I, um, anyways, um, so it, it goes on and on, and I'm not going to address all this, but I, I'm, I'm going to write a letter back to the mayor. It's sort of frustrating because in the five to six years I've been on the commission, we've tried to talk with the city. We've actually offered, I mean, I can't tell you how many meetings I've been to where we literally talked to them about spending down the dollars that we have to help build a tennis facility that would complement the city's construction of a sports complex. Uh, and in fact, I've, I've gone out with Mr. Lee before. We've driven down to Paul Eames Park back when the city put up a big presentation that they were going to redo Paul Eames Park and put up a sports complex, which has never come to fruition. When I first came on the commission, the, the, um, then county administrator, uh, along with the city manager, had a joint group that would meet and make rec, they were going to make recommendations on how to jointly spend the city's recreation SPOST dollars along with the county's tennis center dollars. And that was the recommendation. Uh, then Ms. Subedan came on. Uh, we didn't get really any collaboration at all from the city in any way, shape, or form in deciding how we were going to try and support their building of the sports complex. And then the city said that they wanted to build a sports complex out at Paul Eames. I think, I think they have since abandoned that idea because I don't think it makes, I think someone has determined it doesn't make financial sense. So then, um, we actually had some very collaborative discussions where we involved the, the tennis community. A lot of people put in a lot of volunteer hours. Um, Ms. Subedan and Mr. McCoy have worked together and it's been the recommendation of staff to actually try and supplement what we already have because we have a lot of tennis courts in the community that are unused and unmaintained. Um, and anyway, so it was sort of, I, I, while I say the letter is bizarre, it's just bizarre that, you know, we've, we've come so far in trying to build collaboration and then it's interesting to get a letter from the mayor trying to tell the county how to spend 1.7 million dollars of its own darn money. Um, and, and apparently he doesn't have consensus for that on his own commission. So I'll, um, I'll draft the letter and circulate it to everyone, but I don't intend on spending a lot of time chasing and tilting at windmills. Uh, we're adjourned.